Both those of you that are joining us here in chambers tonight, as well as those of you that are taking the time to join us online. We welcome all of you. It is March 16th, 2023, and this is a special meeting of the Park City Council. All we have council members in chambers with us. Councilmember Toley Gerber and Rubel. Councilmember Dooney is joining us online. Councilmember Dickie is not present this evening. So just to kind of set some expectations about what tonight will be like. We're going to start with a 30 minute presentation from the applicant. We will not be making a presentation. City staff will not be making a presentation tonight. But we have with us here in the chambers, Planning Director Gretchen Milliken, Senior Planner Alexandria Anath, City Engineer John Robertson, and from the wall Consulting Group Jeremy Searle, who's the city's transportation consultant. This is a special meeting. The council was not scheduled to meet this this week. We published our meeting calendar at the beginning of the year for the entire year. And so this was an off week for the council. So I do thank our council members for agreeing to have a special meeting this evening. This meeting is scheduled only as a public input session. We're not going to be discussing the issue as a council tonight. That'll come in a subsequent meeting. So again, tonight is a public input session only with information provided by the applicant. To allow for the maximum number of people to be able to speak tonight. And I see there's such great interest and we have a lot of people joining us online. We are going to limit each individual's comment to five minutes tonight. And that will give everybody a chance to hopefully speak. We'll alternate. We'll take a few comments from in the chambers and then we'll take a few comments from online and back and forth. If you agree with a comment that someone else has made, no need to repeat everything that's been said, but just simply tell us that you agree with the speaker or speakers in front of you have said. We have passionate people on both sides of this issue. And the council has heard people in favor of vacating the road, as well as from people that that are not in favor of that. So I ask that there not be any clapping cheering, jeering, booing, whatever other noises people want to make in the chambers tonight, because that can deter people that might have a differing point of view from expressing their view. If you took the time to send in your comments in an email to the council, we appreciate that. I assure you, the council has read all of those comments. And if requested, they were entered into the public record. So there's no need for you to, if you send an email for you to reread that email to us tonight. We ask when you come up to the podium that you sign in and give us your zip code. Because that helps the council to know who it is that we're that we're receiving the input from. The purpose of tonight is to gain public input on whether the proposed changes to circulation and overall Snow Park Village project design justify the vacation of portions of Deer Valley Drive public right of way. Park City Resolution 8-98 states that vacation of public right of way requires findings of good cause for the proposed vacation and that neither the public nor any person will be materially injured by the vacation. And for those of you that haven't read it yet, good cause is defined in our land management code as providing positive benefits and mitigating negative impacts determined on a case by case basis to include such things as providing public amenities and benefits, resolving existing issues and nonconformities, addressing issues related to the density, promoting excellent and sustainable design, utilizing best planning and design practices, preserving the character of the neighborhood and of Park City and furthering the health, safety, and welfare of Park City's community. For those of you that might not have been able to easily locate the back history of this proposal, as well as the documents and some maps and all of that, on the on the wall over on different parts of the council chamber, there's a QR code. If you wanted to look at that, it will take you back to all the supporting documents from the past. So with that, we will turn some time over. Welcome to the Deer Valley team.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and members of the community. Thank you for making the time this evening. I'm Todd Bennett, President of Deer Valley Resort. Before we get into introductions, I do got to point out the sunshine today was incredible. There was a completely different vibe in town and at the resort today. People were in some incredibly good spirits. Having grown up in upstate New York and lived through many long gray winters, it was nice to see some sunshine today. Today was record snowfall for Deer Valley, 485 inches on the year. We did announce that we're going to extend the season by a week, which will be an opportunity for destination guests, but probably mostly local guests to come out for another week. And I think some of you may have seen, we've also announced Icon reservations. So at Deer Valley, you will need, if you have an Icon pass, you will need to make a reservation in advance to come join our mountain. Some changes that I know might be valuable to the community. A couple of introductions tonight. I want to introduce Wade Budge, Deer Valley Land Use Attorney, Hannah Tyler, Deer Valley Vice President of Resort Planning, and Jake Romney, who is Director of Development. They're going to take you through some of the background on the project. And we appreciate it and take it over to Jake.
Okay, hopefully everybody can hear me all right. First of all, thank you to the council for scheduling the special meeting and allow us to present on our project that we're super excited about. The things that we'd like to cover in our presentation tonight is a little bit of the history of our of the MPD and and our conditional use permit that we're currently in review for. Of course, the right of vacation, the primary reason that we're here tonight, and and what it looks like and and what's involved there. Want to talk about the new drop off and how that will be reconfigured. Also want to talk about the good cause and the community benefits that come because of because of the right of vacation. The other item that we want to hit on is one that we're really excited about. We know is important to to the city and also to Deer Valley. And that is the affordable housing that comes comes as a partner to this project. And then last of all, just want to do do an update on on our community outreach and and what we've been doing and the fact that that continues. Wade, I'll have you go for it.
Yes, Mayor, council members, thank you for this time tonight. We appreciate it. On this slide, we've attempted to summarize some key points that we think are important to keep in mind as we consider this request for a road vacation. I know a lot of this was is already known by the council and members of the community and the mayor. But just it's good to review it. It's been a while since we've been back before this body. As we all know, Deer Valley obtained the entitlements that we're working with back in 1978. That was when this Snow Park area was conceived. And there have been to date 12 amendments of that first initial approval. We're in essence, working on the 13th amendment, which we'll have completed at the end of this entire process. As we know, there were a fixed set of MPD units that were our unit equivalents, excuse me, that were provided for this area. And when we're talking about the Snow Park area, we're talking about the last 209.75 UEs. These are units that could have been placed at any point in time between when it was approved in 1978 and now. But we're now to the point where the rest of the project, for the most part, has been developed. And we're wanting to locate these units in a way that has been long planned, but in a way that is going to be meaningful to the to the resort, but also produce positive benefits for the community. And so that's what we wanted to focus on. We've had a number of open houses, which you may have heard of. We had a series of successful open houses in December. And then we've had some follow up meetings with the Planning Commission, both in December and January. And we're here tonight because of the recommendation from the Planning Commission that we bring this issue to the city council in advance of continuing to process the MPD, which is pending before the Planning Commission. One of the things that is important as we're considering the existing approval is that when we're looking at the item of good cause, what we want to do is highlight the fact that this is a project that has been carefully considered to incorporate well with the values that the community has expressed through its general plan and through all the policies of this city. And as we go through the rest of this presentation tonight, I just would encourage you to watch for a number of those values, including making sure that there are improvements that facilitate the experience of those who are coming on transit or making available transit in a way that's more meaningful to both residents and visitors alike. The other thing that's important to consider is what will be the experience for the user? And how can we make sure that the user on arriving to the project and departing from the project will have an experience that we all is consistent with what we all understand to be Deer Valley? Deer Valley is long banned and continues to be the gem, if you will, of this community. And the intent of this project is to even increase its standing and to, by extension, increase the benefits to this community. The right of way that we are proposing is, the right of vacation, excuse me, that we are proposing is to make it so that the loop concept that we are all comfortable with will continue, but it will continue in a location that is located further to the north. I like the way that it was explained by by others, not me. We didn't originate this idea. But in essence, what we are doing is we are moving the front door of Deer Valley at Snow Park to the north. And we've been very conscious in the way that we're approaching that responsibility of moving the front door. And there are a number of benefits that that moving that front door will create for all of us. One is we'll actually have a snow beach, which we'll get into in greater detail. But when you think about benefits beyond the benefit of having a resort that's world class and continuing to be world class, you're going to have a multimodal center that will be top of class. And we're going to get into some of the details that we'll explain about how that multimodal center will operate and its location and how it will be a benefit. But we're also talking about including within this project multiple drop off experiences or opportunities. And that's important because right now we have a drop off that works well a lot of the time. But what this will do is provide a series of different opportunities for arriving at the resort. Not everyone will have to go up right in the in the vicinity of the current drop off. But there will still be opportunities to have different kinds of drop offs. There are those that will involve a drop off within the parking structure. And then there are other drop off experiences, which we'll show as we go through this presentation. And then finally, it's the we we wanted to make sure that we built into this plan the idea of how it is we can create a vibrant center that can be enjoyed by all. There will be a plaza that will provide both summer and winter time experiences for the public and for those who are visiting our community. It will also have an opportunity to provide experiences for those who, when they end their day and they're choosing to look for something right in the Snow Park area, they'll have food offerings, entertainment offerings, bar offerings, and those other kinds of experiences which are associated with a world class ski resort. So that just provides a broad overview of some of the key elements that will only be made possible through this vacation. And so as we go through our presentation tonight, just wanted to highlight that those will be some of the themes that we'll be touching upon.
And feel free to interrupt us at any time. I know that may not be the format, but if there's ever anything hurting, feel free to ask.
Okay, first first part's right away vacation. So on the screen, you can see a a concept of what a connected village to Snow Park Lodge could look like. And and highlighted in green are the areas of right of way that we're asking to be vacated to make this possible. Highlighted in blue would be would be the new access and front door to Deer Valley, which would be Doe Pass Road. And and we've got it listed here as an easement or a right of way dedication. In 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 meetings with the city, it's it's been discussed that maybe that stays as Deer Valley land and we operate it, which we're fine with. And so we're just, we're willing to be flexible in how the how the breakdown of that that road comes together, whether whether it stays with Deer Valley or whether it becomes city property. So that that gives us a good overlay of what that looks like and and how you can kind of see how this how this village opens up a little bit more and and becomes a little bit larger in that sense. This slide, although a little bit boring, does show the the areas that are affected. It gives the square footages. This is all stuff that the city has, but identifies those different parcels that are affected by the right of way vacation. As Wade was talking about with the new drop off, here's a here's a conceptual image of 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 a person or or guest pulling up to that new drop off. As you can see on the left of the picture would be would be Snow Park Lodge. It's it's it would be getting a renovation and a remodel through this process. Directly behind the flags and center screen would be a an addition to Snow Park Lodge. And then on the right hand side is a is a hotel. As we've looked at this, as we've looked at this drop off and gone through these plans, it was important to us to keep a high level of service and and look through the lens through the lens of a guest. The guest being anybody and everybody that visits here, whether you live in one of the local HOAs and communities or whether you're coming up here to go skiing for the day or whether you're coming here on vacation and and make that a great experience for everybody. So this drop off, after done, will be closer to the lifts, closer to the Carpenter Lift, closer to Silver Lake Express. No more walking uphill, no more walking upstairs, deciding whether you go left or right through the maze that that is Snow Park until you arrive finally to to the lift. So it's all on grade access. One of the best parts about this is it's closer to ski school. It's direct asset access to ski school so that they, and and again, on grade in order to get there. So really, what we've tried to do and attempt to do in this plan is is bring those two lifts down and closer and incorporate them into the village so that everything becomes more accessible from a from a guest experience. Part of part of the the requirement is is good cause and community benefit. And and that main part being this transit hub. As you can see from the earlier image of the right of way, where it allows us to open up the project, it allows space to accommodate a world class transit hub at Deer Valley. And that's Todd to to speak a little bit to that and hit some of the highlights there.
Thanks, Jake. You know, as Jake talked about, that the idea here for the transit center is to create a new front door for Deer Valley. And we're kind of looking at the current view and the location of where the new transit center could be. And it's it's a fine view and it it's reasonable. But I think we can do better. And it's something that the development team and I have talked a lot about. So Jake, if we go to the next slide, you know, this is a rendering. But what we have to do is an opportunity to create a world class transit center. A couple of the amenities that we wanted to talk about, restrooms, waiting area, lockers, protected from the weather. These are all things that we don't have today for the current transit center or transit drop it on drop off area. I think another important component of this is, once you're in the transit center, it's the pedestrian zone. There is no vehicle conflict or traffic. You can walk from the transit center from the curb. And there's never, you're not walking across multiple lanes like we have today. We believe the transit center, the transit center has been endorsed by High Valley Transit. There's been a lot of collaborative conversations with them. And that was a big win, I think, in collaboration with that group. And ultimately, we think the transit hub ties to the city's goals of transportation and high occupancy vehicles. So we see this as a big benefit. We think it's a big win for the guests. We think it's a win for the city and appreciate that consideration.
Just want to throw this up on the screen for a little bit so everybody could see it. We've really pointed out a lot of the a lot of the benefits that that come through this transit center. And and I think one of those main ones being it it puts us in line with Park City goals and and Park City, well, Park City goals as far as transportation is concerned. It allows us the ability to connect the lower Deer Valley area to to plans outside of outside of Deer Valley from a transit perspective. And I think we've really hit on everything, especially, you know, a couple of things, other things I'd mentioned, I guess, is the is the is the ability to have a bus charging station there. We're planning on putting those in, bike parking, and really, really, you know, adopt that that perspective of this being the front door to Deer Valley and and one of the main ways to get here. On the screen, you'll see the overall image and drawings of Lower Deer Valley and and highlighted in blue all the areas and and that that really were touching and improving as part of this project. It was it was really put on us at the beginning from the city to prioritize prioritize pedestrians, so from a walking perspective, prioritize them from biking perspective, and then prioritize buses. And this plan accomplishes that. So we've we've, what we'll be doing is is adding, taking the multi use path that exists today. And any, and I believe it's about eight feet everywhere and widening it to 12 feet everywhere possible. We'll also be widening the road to accommodate that third lane, which everybody has affectionately dubbed the SML. So that way you have a lane that goes around this entire loop that can be used for for, you know, the priority depending on the time of year. Buses in the winter time, bikes in the spring, summer, and fall. And then it also hasn't added benefit that helps with emergency access and egress. And then also you could totally manage those those lanes for events so that you could get two lanes exiting at at certain points. So there's that. And then also, I think, one thing that we that we don't talk a lot about is the the improvements to aged infrastructure that will also come as part of the right of way vacation. So Deer Valley Drive West up towards up towards the current drop off. In that right of way, there's aged infrastructure in there from gas lines, power lines, sewer lines, water that all need to be upgraded. And that would be something that Deer Valley would be picking up on and and replacing as part of this project. I wanted to throw this up on the screen so that everybody can see. This is our, this is an aerial image of of Snow Park in the parking lots today. There's a lot of asphalt, of course. And what we're seeing mainly is one arrival point to Deer Valley. That is a drop off in the buses, all in one spot. If you park in the parking lots, you're walking the long distance somewhere upwards of 2,000 feet, unless you take the tram and then walk into the tunnel, all uphill of about about 80 feet of elevation gain, and then the stairs to to get up to the lifts. Here's here's an image that's showing all of the different arrival points that you'll have in the future. So we're taking the one and breaking it up into several different ones. Of course, keeping the drop off below Snow Park, up above, up below Snow Park Lodge. It's very purpose driven for ski school, hotel shuttles, you know, and just and and general drop off. Of course, a hotel drop off. And then you do have the parking garage entries that they can go in and where the where they're pull in, and they will experience a high level Deer Valley garage. So all of your parking technology in place to help guide you to the open spots, help circulate you in and out and make it an efficient process. It'll no longer be a drop your family off at the drop off and then go park. You can just pull into the garage, park with your family, grab your stuff out of your your car SUV, and then walk 25, 50 feet over to an elevator and pop up on the plaza, pop up on the plaza to to grab a drink or a coffee or whatever else, or pop up right behind the gondola and start your day. And then, of course, the mobility hub that we talked about. And it's easy access to get to get dropped off and picked up there and then easy to circulate up escalators over to the gondola. We really want to highlight the pedestrian experience and the and the pedestrian circulation, the truck connectivity that happens because of this. So again, the theme here is connectivity, making it better for pedestrians, and then also making it safer. So this is an area that we've really focused on, looking at where we're adding traffic signals. It's going to make those intersections safer for pedestrians. They'll be able to cross the street safer. Also, where there's stop signs and other crosswalks, we'll be implementing and adding rapid flashing beacons on each side of the crosswalk so that you hit that button, yellow lights flash, warns cars that you're coming, makes it much safer, and just enhances that experience for everybody that that wants to come here. So this is now a, you know, definitely a trailhead in the summertime for people to to start their day hiking or even just even mountain biking. And then, of course, your your elevated ski experience. What we wanted to do as well tonight was talk about some of the past plans that have that have been put forth, that have been that have been brought to Deer Valley, and why we haven't selected them and why we why we're on the plan that we are today. You can see the one we have today, that that circulation image in the middle. The other four around. One thing I'd like to say is that is that these plans in the past were not actually commissioned by Deer Valley. They were brought to Deer Valley by developers who came in and said, you have these available entitlements and UEs, let us help you use them. And from our perspective, they weren't, they they didn't take into account the guest perspective and look through that guest lens as well as they could have. Whereas today's plan looks at it as a as a resort based plan and really how's that experience for the guests? And I just want to reiterate, guests being everybody and anybody that visits here, whether whether you're local or or coming up from from in from Hebrew or elsewhere. What these plans lacked in the past was that they didn't, they didn't align with Park City transportation goals. They didn't align with Lower Deer Valley Neighborhood Plan, General Plan. They don't have a mobility hub. They don't improve roadway conditions for or transportation for bikes and pedestrians. There wasn't a partnership to improve traffic through buses. There's limited to no operate ski experience. It does, it's not, they don't make it safer. The plan today makes it much safer for pedestrians by removing pedestrian vehicular conflicts. These ones don't do that. They didn't have a gondola that goes from Snow from from Snow Park to Silver Lake. Limited utility upgrades, longer walking, walking distances, and and the list kind of goes on. Whereas today, we really feel like we have a plan that checks all the boxes. That's the right plan. It improves safety. It has a transit hub for six buses with all of the amenities that Todd mentioned, from restrooms and lockers, waiting area, driver facilities. It's a world class transit center. The multi use path going around Lower Deer Valley. It aligns with the city, with Park City Transportation Goals. It aligns with the Deer Valley Neighborhood General Plan, includes the roadway improvements. It does create a world class experience, an operate ski experience at the end of your ski day. And a new term that that I guess is starting to be used is an operate bike experience at the end of your biking day. So, yep. I wish I could claim it, but it wasn't me who came up with that. And of course, the utility upgrades in Deer 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 Valley West, right west. You can see here on on the screen, a quick kind of before and after, conceptually existing versus proposed. And I'll just read here, the project transforms the lodge and parking lots to Snow Park into a vibrant mixed use mountain village. Scheme will be extended downhill into the fabric of the village, creating prime addresses for skier services, food and beverage, and luxury hotel and unique residential offerings enhancing the visitor experience year round.
Just one more item before we move on to the important topic of affordable housing. One of the things that Jake's presentation emphasized is the fact that there is that multimodal facility. And let me just express a couple of points. When we evaluated the other opportunities that were brought by other developers, they lacked that multimodal. And what's interesting here is that this project technically, because it was approved back in 78, could go ahead and just place those units without offering the community anything back. And there's nothing in the code or in the various requirements that would require Deer Valley to build a multimodal center. But what Deer Valley did is they said, how can we go and provide and give something back to the community? And that's where in talking with staff and looking over plans and and interpreting and understanding what were the priorities of the city that they saw that this is a real opportunity for this whole community in this area. But that is only going to be possible through a road vacation. So when you think, there's not room sufficient to both do a multimodal and some of those other development plans in order to locate those 209 UEs that were approved long ago. The other thing that's really important is that those impacts that will be associated with those long ago approved 209 UEs will be upon us, whether we do this plan or not. But if we do this plan, we're creating not only a world class facility, but we're creating an area which is going to improve our traffic experience. And what do I mean by that? Well, by having multiple arrival areas, we're reducing those impacts in for those who are arriving. And then critically, for those who are departing, instead of having everyone leave at the same time, we'll be holding those people. And so that's why this has been carefully planned and designed to make sure that when you're thinking about the bucket of benefits that are created by this plan, you're creating a plaza, place that can be enjoyed by all. You're making it so that there's a asset in the form of a multimodal center that's available for the transit community. There's a broader, there's a a series of of expanded trail systems around. And then there's a plaza that provides opportunity for people to to come and experience the world class resort. If we were just to drop another community in condos on top of those parking lots, we would have just a disjointed community that wouldn't be an extension. It would be separated by a road acting as a moat around it. But by vacating that road, we're able to make it integrated and provide those other benefits. A key part of the project, though, is affordable housing. And so we wanted to spend a moment talking about some important initiatives that would be part of this project.
Thank you, Wade. Um, this is really exciting. Um, we recognize housing as a priority for this community and we've made it a priority for our team specifically in how we satisfy the obligation that this council agreed to in April of last year. Um, and I'm thrilled to share that we've been working hard on a feasibility study for a Deer Valley-owned parcel in Bonanza Park. Um, and we see this as not only an investment in our employees, but a continuation of Deer Valley's legacy of being a leader in employee housing in this community. Um, as some of you may know, we increased our housing stock this past fall by over 40%. Um, and as Todd says, we got scrappy. Um, for those of you guys that know anything about the real estate industry, the rental market was a little complex in the fall. And so we were able to take advantage of that and kind of snatch up some houses. Um, but that's not sustainable. And so we're really excited to talk about this housing opportunity at what a parcel we call Ski Trail. Um, and it's just under an acre and a half located off Bonanza Drive um on Lower Iron Horse Loop. And we think we can get between 200 and 250 units using the Affordable Housing Master Plan Development um, application. So we would be bringing that to you after this phase one CUP. Um, and we're hoping to get that into you hopefully in the fall. Um, but this is just a really great opportunity for us to be contributing to the Bonanza Park area. We think there's a ton of complimentary uses. Um, it's walkable to all the major facilities and it's on several major bus routes. And so we think while it's, it's, you know, great to have housing on site. We think centrally locating it here in town um not only gives our employees access to Deer Valley, but allows them to enjoy our community much like the rest of us do. So very exciting and we'll be back with more.
Okay, as a final note, just, just uh, you know, wanted to make sure everybody knows that we are, we continue with, with public outreach. We're always open to be, to be uh, for questions or if you want to talk or meet with us. Um, we, we, uh, we've been directing people to our, our Deer Valley Snow Park website. And there, there are comments coming in there that are in support and, and questions and we'd, we'd love to address those. And we're letting you meet any time. We actually had a meeting last week, a week ago, um, tomorrow with the Protect the Loop folks that we felt went, was positive and went well. And it's good to get together and hear their, their concerns and opinions as we continue to, to, uh, to work with the community that way. And what I want to do is just throw up on the screen a few of those letters of support that have been coming in for the project, which is, which is actually pretty rare in these situations. Um, so we're proud of them. We think they're great. Um, two of them that, that I, that we think are very, very important are Powder Run and Trails End. The two most impacted communities by the vacation are actually, are actually in support of the project. And so that's a, that's a very positive thing. Um, with that, thank you again, and that's it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So as I said earlier, there won't be a presentation from city staff tonight and we have allocated 90 minutes for public input. So we're going to go ahead and open that portion of the meeting right now. For those of you that are joining us online, again, welcome. If you want to go ahead and put your hand up, uh, we will be taking a few comments from in the chambers and then we'll go online and then we'll go back and forth with that. Um, I ask that as you come forward, that you keep your comments to five minutes. My friend Jasmine over there has a bell to help you stay within that five minutes. But so when you hear that ring, it's time to wrap it up. Um, also I ask that you keep your, your comments respectful and that um, if you are going to repeat something that's already been said, please just tell us you agree with that. So that leaves room for more people to be speaking tonight. So with that, welcome.
Good evening, councillors and Madam Mayor. My name is Angela Moscetta. We have a little bit of a collaborative presentation this evening. Alison Keenan will bring up the rear. On behalf of everyone involved with Protect the Loop, thank you for the opportunity to offer public opinion in this specially dedicated forum. When a developer comes before council, they present a narrative. The more expensive and high-yield the project, the more elaborate the narrative, which is typically supported by seasoned project managers, stunning renderings, technical drawings, contracted studies, attorneys, comms teams, marketing, investors, access to capital, and sometimes even the legislature. Plans change in small ways and big ways, and in a conditional use state like Utah, staff's narrative usually ends up in sync with the developers. On the other side of this particular public process equation is the public. And what we have available to us is inherently limited. We are laypeople with jobs, families and other responsibilities. We have limited financial means to retain professional consultants and fund grammar requests. We are not privy to the back and forth between applicant and staff that leads to amendments, many of which are made in between public uh packet publish and meetings like this one. We rely heavily upon these opportunities for public comment to affirm our rightful place inside of public process. So about this public process and where we're at today. Edgar and Polly Stern, whom I had the pleasure of knowing and working for, opened Deer Valley Resort in 1981. In 87, the Penske family joined on as partners. Deer Valley quickly became recognized as a top-tier ski destination, helping to put Park City on the global map and draw the Olympics to Utah in 2002. In 2017, the Sterns and Penskes sold the resort to a new company, KSL Capital Partners. And then to compete with the publicly traded Vale Resorts and the Epic Pass, KSL and other partners reorganized under the umbrella now known as Altera Mountain Company. Shortly thereafter, Altera began marketing multi-resort access through its Icon Pass program. Initially, Altera promoted business as usual, but in five years, we've seen numerous leadership changes, increasing lift ticket prices in crowds, the end of seafood buffet and BYOB at concerts, and the introduction of a Taste of Luxury series that offers $1,800 plate dinners. The Snow Park Project website reads, quote, Deer Valley intends to remain within previously approved provisions such as height limits and allowable square footage as it moves forward with permit applications for specific elements. A letter from Todd Bennett reads, quote, I am committed to honoring the original vision of Edgar and Polly Stern. One of Altera's guiding principles for the Snow Park development is, quote, being good neighbors, comply with existing entitlements and no variance requests. And even today, former city planner and current Deer Valley Vice President of Resort Planning Hannah Tyler states, we are not seeking any exceptions, but this is disingenuous as Deer Valley, through its owner Altera, is now pursuing a significant right-of-way vacation on which their MPD is contingent. And Altera has acknowledged for the record that this classifies as, quote, a substantive modification. On July 9th, 1998, Park City Municipal adopted Resolution 8-98, a policy statement regarding the vacation of public right-of-ways. Whereas, although the city council will give significant weight to the planning commission recommendation, an ultimate decision to vacate or not rests squarely with the city council. A year ago, council tasked Planning Commission with making a determination on Altera's traffic and circulation plans and providing input on the row vacation petition. Planning Commission was unable to meet this directive as Altera continues to refuse to provide alternative plans that do not rely on a row vacation. Frustrated with the encumbered process and contrary to staff's published summary, Planning Commission did not offer a recommendation on traffic and circulation plans and kicked the matter up to council for a decision on the row vacation anyway. Park City's resolution is consistent with Utah State Code Section 17-2710-98-609.5, petition to vacate a public street effective May 5th, 2021. It upholds this process, including this very public hearing as the forum in which to determine good cause and material injury. Members of PTL have prepared critical analysis of the statutes guiding your decision today and also of the thousands of pages of materials attempting to influence that decision in favor of the applicant. I am confident upon your most objective consideration of these complex matters and nuance points, you will conclude, as we all have, that the final decision is quite simple. The row vacation cannot be granted according to the terms set forth by Park City Municipal and the state of Utah.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
My apologies. I left my reading glasses in the car, so.
Oh, I know how that is.
I'm improvising here a little bit.
Okay.
Good evening, councillors and, and Mayor Nor- Worrell. Thank you for your service. My name is Laurel Bari and I'm a resident at, of In the Trees. It's a development of 14 residents that sits approximately 10 feet north of the last inbound bus stop on Deer Valley Drive West. And it's approximately 100 feet north of Deer Valley, Altera's proposed multi-directional intersection at the west end of what will be the widened Doe Pass Road. Altera's uh right-of-way vacation request, if granted, would directly and materially impact In the Trees as well as other property owners and individuals in Deer Valley and Park City at large. All of you know the policy standard for determining whether to grant or deny a right-of-way vacation petition is set forth in Park City Municipal Code Resolution 8-98, which states, the city must find that no person nor the public is materially injured by the proposal. Materially injured generally means direct or indirect injury to property or property right as a result of the proposal. The injury must be significant enough to raise to the level of interfering with the injury, injured, excuse me, party's use of his or her property or property right. Utah Code states, "The action of the legislative body vacating some or all of the public street or county utility easement that has been dedicated to public use must not be construed to impair any right-of-way or any parcel or lot owner." To that point, if awarded, Altera's vacation petition and contingent site circulation plan will directly and materially impact safe access for everyone entering and exiting In the Trees. In the Trees is located on the one-way southbound section of Deer Valley West. This location presents a unique, unique egress and ingress situation for our owners and guests. To enter into, in, in the trees, we must turn in right off of our, into our shared driveway off of Deer Valley. Excuse me, Deer Valley Drive West. To exit, we must turn right and drive up slope. So for example, if we want to go to a grocery store, say Market Fresh, our most direct route from our homes would be turning out of our, our shared driveway, which is Parter's Lane. Um, and then making a U-turn to, at the intersection of Royal Street, then head northbound towards the Y. At present, this is a safe and uncomplicated maneuver even at peak travel times. Conversely, Altera's proposed new intersection at Doe Pass and Deer Valley Drive West doesn't support safe U-turns. And why? Because of the steep grade differential between the southbound and northbound lanes of Deer Valley Drive. Additionally, it has insignificant width to safely do a U-turn for, say, a bus or shuttle or cars. As Mr. Romney had mentioned, he met with a group of us and we thank him for that approximately a week ago. And in our exchange, he mentioned that a letter that we had, our association had presented uh in December, that he had turned that to his design group to try to address this, what proposed new U-turn situation. That said, even relaxing the grade and widening the turn, it doesn't solve what will be increased congestion that will be competing with U-turning cars and cars that will be going towards uh, or to park in the parking garage, which was approximately 100 feet. It's a short distance. And this congestion is not properly accounted for as fears and peers fail to include traffic numbers for the hotel uh that's proposed on Deer Valley Drive West, just north of Royal Street in their accounts. This should be done. Hotel, a business represents significant traffic increase to Deer Valley Drive before the Y and all along Deer Valley Drive West. As it will involve double trips for pickup and drop-off users who don't use their own uh vehicles as well as private shuttles and service and delivery vehicles. Again, this should be factored in.
Can I ask you to wrap up, please?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Anyway, so it would seem that the safer um means for us to avoid this U-turn would be we'd be traveling along Doe Pass and then around the loop or going up Royal Street and down Marsack. And again, that would be an unfair burden. It would dramatically change the use of our, our property.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. And I would invite you to also look at our letter that we serve or that we submitted in December that goes into more detail on uh what we call the gauntlet approach of merging into this area as well as land encroachment issues, uh which could lead to eminent domain and obviously the question will be, who pays for that? Taxpayers or Altera?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We'll take one more comment and then we'll go online. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, um councillors and Madam Mayor. My name is Melissa Davidson. Um, I reside in Park City and I am General Counsel for the Lakeside Condominium Owners Association, which as many of you know is a community of about 60 homes. It's bounded on the south by Doe Pass Road um and on the west by the outbound.
And what is your zip code, please?
84060.
Okay, thank you.
Um, per the city's uh right-of-way vacation resolution, um, council members have to consider among other, other things the capacity of the existing Deer Pass Road uh and, and changes um to that circulation. And also whether there's fencing, screening, landscaping, um, or other that will separate the proposed massively upsized Doe Pass Road from the existing lakeside residential uh neighborhood. Uh, and then also whether there's been adequate mitigation for noise, vibration and other factors negatively impacting the people and property around the development. Um, I was also at the meeting last week with Mr. Romney. Um, and I was informed there that there actually had been no analysis of, for noise and no mitigation plans at all as far as uh buffering or screening uh for, for those, um, for those harms to lakeside. Um, the traffic noise from that expanded Doe Pass Drive is going to reverberate against that parking structure uh and head straight towards the lakeside units that abut Doe Pass uh road. Uh, also at that meeting, I learned that um uh from Mr. Romney, that if Altera retains control of that widened and increasingly used Doe Pass Road, then Altera will be able to manipulate from the uh, the garage ingress and egress as needed uh and the circulation along Doe Pass Road. Um, although it's not clear by what mechanism they do that, whether that's by lights or barricades or quite how. Um, but for my clients, this means that the units abutting Doe Pass Road, uh, they're going to suffer the noise and the traffic and the vibration and all of that, not only from all of those vehicles coming in, but now all of the vehicles coming out. Um, and all of this without any mitigation plans from Altera at all to protect against those harms. Um, also, I, I think it's important to note that Altera's entire um case for the, the transit adoption uh the, and the park ones, they hem on, they hinge on a claim that this is going to be a markedly improved experiences for guests and families hauling their gear. Um, they tout the escalators and maintaining the grade and significantly shortened walks from the parking and the drop-off spots. Um, but this is another area where it's going to be really important to deconstruct that narrative. And I think Altera is playing a little loose with some of those numbers. Um, according to Altera, the lifts are going to be stretched into the plaza so that when people park, they're going to end up much closer to them. But at present, we already know that most people are not walking very far. Um, either the people movers are moving them from the, from the surface lots uh to the tunnel uh at the basement of the Snow Park Lodge, or they're dropped off by bus or private vehicle uh at the surface level drop-off and they're walking 480 feet to the Carpenter. Uh, in February 2002, uh 22, Mr. Romney's predecessor, Rich Wagner, um, presented on a community call the measured distances for skiers from both the transit hub and the new drop-off to the Carpenter lift extension and new gondola. From the transit hub, the skiers would have to go 750 feet to the gondola and 1,000 feet to the carpenters, which means that this proposal actually increases the distance from um the most heavily used, heavily used base lift. In the plan submitted in November 2022, In the plan submitted in November 2022, although the site plan didn't change, the the distances from the transit hub were now recorded at just by 50 feet for the gondola and 800 feet to Carpenters. And it looks like Altera has decided to just subtract the 200 feet of escalators from that total travel distance. And these November plans also include the distance from the surface level elevator terminals to the gondola, which range from about 50 to 670 feet. But again, these measurements don't account for the additional distance walked from the parking spaces to the internal elevators, and they also don't include the additional 250 feet to Carpenters. So all of these numbers were removed from the December packets and all subsequent packets. Luckily, Protect the Loop has recorded these. But really asking skiers in boots to travel longer distances, it really disincentivizes that, you know, transit and park once, and it's really going to force more people into the drop off. So thank you.
Thank you. We'll move now to online comments.
We have someone logged in with an email ending in Berkeley.edu. If you could please state your full name for the record.
Hello?
Hello, it's Orly Grace Frank.
Welcome. Can you state your zip code as well, please?
Eight four oh six oh.
Okay, great. Go ahead with your comment.
Well, you know, I also feel as though I live in Chaparral and I feel that what has been stated already, sort of the master, the grand plan doesn't ever seem to take into account how this development is going to impact the residents around Deer Valley Loop in general. And we're all concerned about noise, traffic, everything that's been suggested previously. I had written in a letter before several times. I really just came on to watch. So I didn't have anything specific to say. But basically, what has been stated is exactly how I feel as well. And I know the people that live around me have said the same thing. I just don't see how we are being taken into consideration, the homeowners who have been there, you know, for a long time prior to Altera buying the resort.
Well, thank you so much for joining us tonight. We'll take another one online.
There is no more hands raised at this time, Mayor.
No other hands? Okay, thank you. Come back to the chambers. Hi.
Good evening, councillors and Madam Mayor. My name is Carol Schenevert and I live in Deer Lake Village and am a member of the HOA board. In response to concerns about plans to push eighty
Can I ask you to move the microphone a little closer to your mouth, please?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
In response to concerns about plans to push 80% of exit traffic to DV Drive East in the afternoons, Jake offered that they could strike more of a balance like we already see without now without a reconfiguration circulation pattern and shift some traffic back onto DV Drive West. But any and all ad hoc circulation changes are significant unknowns because the theoretical possibilities have not been studied. And it is unreasonable to expect the planning commission to sign off on a circulation plan with so many variables. Additionally, it would be illegal for city council to do so. Resolution eight dash nine eight addresses neighborhood compatibility. The proposed row vacation shall be analyzed according to the following criteria. The use will be compatible with surrounding structures in use and circulation, and the effects of any differences in use have been mitigated through careful planning. The city shall review each of the following items when considering compatibility. Size and location of the site. Traffic impacts including capacity of the existing streets in the area. Emergency vehicle access, location and amount of off-street parking, internal circulation, fencing, screening and landscaping to separate the use from adjoining uses. Building mass, bulk and site plans, signs and lighting, physical design and compatibility with surrounding structures in mass, scale, style, design and architectural detailing, provision of snow storage and mitigation of noise, vibration, odors, steam and other mechanical factors that might affect people and property off-site, control of delivery and service vehicles, loading and unloading zones and screening of trash pickup areas. So while council intended to make a decision today based upon input from planning commission pursuant to their extremely limited exploration of circulation plans, Altera readily admits are not fully fleshed out and still changing. You, the council, are not permitted to render this decision. In fact, and by your own municipal ordinance, you must confirm the effects of any differences in use have been mitigated. And this mitigation confirmation must extend well beyond traffic and circulation to all aspects of the application, including but not limited to increases in noise and pollution resulting from circulation changes, impacts from excavation, widening and engineering required to support high functioning intersections, light pollution from a gondola operating into the night, and illumination required for larger plaza, a ski beach, an ice rink and pedestrian and bike paths, and all material injuries resulting from loss of right of way. And what about establishment of specific car count in wait time thresholds that merit forced circulation changes at the hands of Altera? Surely where safety and emergency vehicle access may be impacted, we cannot leave this to subjective personal opinion or whims. Rather, these thresholds must be scientifically determined and a comprehensive plan must be approved by experts, including our local fire department. Speaking of our fire department, it's worth noting that Battalion Chief Mike Owens' letter in his packet underscores the as yet unmitigated and unconfirmed nature of various aspects of Altera's plans. Must be designed and the three instances of must be approved may clear what Altera's plan lacks. It would be prudent for the petitioner to flesh out these details as council cannot grant a row vacation without the proof the effects of any and all differences have been mitigated. Thank you.
Thank you.
My zip code is eight four zero six zero.
Thank you. Did you sign in? Thank you. Hi there. Welcome.
Good evening. Hello, City Council, Madam Mayor. My name is Bob Boone. I'm a resident and American flag and I currently serve as our HOA president. We count 95 households as members and American flag. I'm also an attorney. I was struck by assertions by Altera's attorneys, Snell and Wilmer, addressing to planning commission, but offered in direct response to our neighbors at in the trees. They say, quote, "To develop the project in accordance with current codes and existing entitlements, DVR has submitted an MPD application," end quote. This is misleading. And as many have pointed out, attempts to bind the city to an outcome by inextricably linking Altera's MPD compliance with petition of the row vacation. Let none of us forget that multiple versions of plans not including a row vacation were not only considered and circulated before, but those plans are also entitled. Snell and Wilmer posits several inaccurate statements about the circulation plan, transit adoption and Altera's traffic study. They say, quote, "An item that ITT has not considered is that the road vacation is key to making the entire project operate in a way that benefits all concerned, including those neighboring the project. It is notable that the homeowner associations closest to the vacation are supportive of the vacation," end quote. 1,114 households represented by 31 HOAs would tell you that the trails in community will benefit from the private gated access. And Powder Run affirms their support is expressly conditional on there not being a bus lane. Snell and Wilmer posits that, quote, "By allowing the vacation, Park City will be putting into action its goal of prioritizing transit while ensuring the arrival experience remains top of class for one of the state's foremost recreation destinations," end quote. First of all, the recreation destination is not a community owned asset, but rather the highly profitable asset of an umbrella company, including private equity firms, expected to return dividends to their investors. Maintaining the arrival experience is not the responsibility of Park City residents and taxpayers. Second, by Snell and Wilmer's admission, the arrival experience is already top of class. Therefore, ensuring it remains such, ensuring it remains such requires only that it not be altered. And third, any claims about putting into action Park City's transit first goals cannot be guaranteed by a row vacation. And Altera's proposed plans, let's explore why. Snell and Wilmer offers another flawed argument. They suggest a sheltered staging area for buses will make them more appealing, except that cars will be similarly sheltered in underground garages. Since Altera's plan does not include providing sheltered experiences at every other bus stop and transit hub in town, this does nothing to incentivize transit over cars when the upgrade to one experience counsels out the upgrade to the other. And then there is the matter of the Fair Pierce Traffic Study. WCG submitted its peer review on December 9. At the time, Altera was seeking a 20% reduction in parking. WCG, excuse me, WCG states, quote, "The applicant is proposing to add paid parking, which will result in a decrease in parking demand," end quote. Park City Mountain implemented paid parking at its mountain village base this season and coupled that with a parking reservation system. Notably, Deer Valley will require icon pass holders to make ski reservations next season, but not parking reservations. Park City Mountain and PCMC tout paid parking as a successful mitigation strategy. But this mitigating is really amounting to migration to unauthorized parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any hands up online?
Yes, Mayor, we have Norman Schwartz.
Can you hear me okay?
You can. Welcome.
Thank you. The the roads exiting Deer Valley are already overstressed and a and a condition of approval should be a method of relieving that. There are a number of different methods to relieve the additional the traffic and and the what I would suggest is at least one lane, a flex lane be added from Deer Valley all the way out to 248 and that pressure be put on UDOT to go ahead and widen 248. Because if the traffic is already overstressed and there and there is already gridlock on high traffic days, it would seem logical that this project is going to strangle the situation and create a horrible traffic situation. I think that that in conjunction with this approval, there needs to be methods which frankly are very simple. The addition of one exit lane from Deer Valley all the way over to 248 and no stopping at Sidewinder and Deer Valley Drive would create the flow and move many more cars in that direction. And and I think that the approval of the of the vacation is a first step to the approval of the process. And if the and if the and if the traffic is increased significantly, which it appears it would be, I think that that this needs to be done in conjunction with the approval. Also, I think that in order to relieve the strain and parking for the Deer Valley, for the Deer Valley base area at Snow Park, if there was a Highway 40 entrance to the Deer Crest Gondola and the Mayflower and Mayflower, this would this would be very helpful. We need to divert traffic away from 224 and 248 for day skiers to these entrances. Deer Valley should improve the Deer Crest Gondola as a condition of approval of this project. And and absolutely needs some real parking over at the Deer Crest Gondola, which from what I understand by 9:15 is taken on many days. So I think that in conjunction with consideration of the vacation, it is an opportunity for Park City to go ahead and put pressure on UDOT to go ahead and improve the roads in and out and to relieve the traffic and also for Deer Valley to wake up and Deer Valley Altera and creates some real parking at the gondola, which is already at capacity and over capacity on many days. I thank you all for your for your time and your effort.
Thank you so much. What is your zip code, please? We lost it. Okay, any other hands up? Hey. Hello?
Hello, City Council and Madam Mayor. My name is Scott Martin. I'm a full-time resident of Amber Daystar and currently serve on our HOA board. I represent 24 households. Parking reservation system works to stagger arrivals and lessen the crush on circulation routes in the morning. But Park City absolutely has no evidence that paid parking on its own gets people to drive less and opt instead for transit. To the contrary, skiers now park in neighborhood streets at Walgreens, at Fresh Market, Silver Mountain Sports Club, China Bridge, and even as Deer Valley acknowledges at the Deer Valley Plaza and Snow Park lots in order to still drive most of the way into Park City and then skirt paid parking as close as possible to the resort. Further evidence lies in statistics. Deer Valley has been at capacity 26 days per their Twitter alerts and they have more than once overflowed their overflow parking lot at Treasure Mountain Junior High. Park City Mountain has sold out paid parking 47 days per their text parking alerts. On 15 of those days, free parking at Cabaret Lot has filled up. Paid parking at Pendry Garage has filled up seven days per Twitter and there have been 23 days to date where Deer Valley, Park City Mountain Village, has reached capacity on the same day. Additional evidence includes the virtual gridlock extending from both resorts all the way out of town on numerous ordinary non-peak days. Ironically, including December 19th, the Monday evening, many of us arrived late to the special 5:30 PM Planning Commission meeting in Prospector, whether we traveled by car or by bus. 10 days later, at 5:30 on Thursday, December 29th, Google and Apple Maps showed 41 minute travel times between Silver Lake and Fresh Market. Traffic was caused by volumes of cars leaving Deer Valley Resort and Upper Deer Valley Homes. Few minutes later, gridlock had grown so much worse along Deer Valley Drive en route to Bonanza that that Google Maps began directing cars to Main Street and then Park Avenue northbound to reach the Jan's Coal intersection. This kind of traffic pattern aided by widely-used technology, over which we have no control, is in conflict with LMC Section 15-6-1, which states that the city has a duty to protect residential neighbors from the impacts of non-residential uses. Surely this applies to sufficiently mitigate parking migration issues and also allow the increased traffic brought to residential neighborhoods adjacent to Deer Valley, both before the Y and along the Loop. Field observations like this not only poke holes in additional assumptions, including Alterra's unsupported claim that adding more amenities to their snow park bases will help stagger departures, but the evidence and observations also demand we face reality. WCG notes in its March 6 report that the applicant is no longer requesting a parking reduction. What this translates to is additional capacity in its garages and therefore additional daily trips generated, specifically 257 peak AM hour trips and 321 peak hour PM trips. In response to a PowerPoint submitted by the applicant in February 2023, WCG asks, "Why did the assumed transit reduction percentage increase with the removal of the parking reduction request? It would seem likely that transit ridership would decrease with the availability of more parking stalls." The report also notes other inaccurate assumptions on the part of Fair and Pierce, inadequate calculations, lack of specificity, and the need for an updated traffic analysis using accurate trip generation. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you sign in?
I am.
Thank you.
Hello. Hello. Good evening, councilors and Madam Mayor. My name is Lori Frankel and I reside at American Flag. 84060 is my ZIP.
Thank you.
In the section addressing Alterra's proposed mitigation measures, WCG relies on the same inaccurate assumptions as Fair and Pierce regarding paid parking reducing parking demand. Again, we all witness regularly that paid parking is not a deterrent for a sufficient number of skiers in this market as urban core parking dynamics do not apply in the world of ski elites. In its Identified Concerns section, WCG notes, "PCMC has a stated goal of reducing peak hour traffic volumes by 20% citywide. The applicant's project will add to peak hour traffic in the most congested areas of the city." End quote. When we consider material harm, this impacts the entire community, citywide. This single point is reason enough alone to deny the row vacation. Jake Romney apparently asserted in the meeting the other day that the row vacation doesn't change anything in terms of the amenities. He says without the row vacation, the use is the same, but this is again patently inaccurate. Deer Valley's original plans without the row vacation were more residential in nature. Alterra's plans with the row vacation introduce far more hospitality amenities and reasons for non-skiers to visit the base. We see this real-life example with the St. Regis Vintage Room, which on any given day is overflowing with more people in street clothes than in ski boots. St. Regis residents are frustrated by the frequent hour-plus lines each way for the funicular. And Deer Crest and Lower Deer Valley residents are impacted by increasing use of Queen Ester Gate for lift rides. Interestingly, Uber will not even pick up at the main entrance. Rounding out concerns about amenities adding capacity to the base, the ski beach and expanded plaza that would be built on land acquired through the vacation are amenities in and of themselves that Fair and Pierce does not consider when accounting for the people and vehicles. And so therefore, again, that the applicant's proposed project with the row vacation will exasperate traffic beyond what their traffic study accounts for is reason enough to deny the vacation petition. WCG goes on to challenge distribution assumptions. WCG points to numerous potential violations of the Land Management Code that the Fair and Pierce reports applicants' renderings and plans don't satisfy. WCG states that additional visum transportation analysis does not consider actual travel conditions, downstream impacts, or other common causes of delay in the Deer Valley Loop during peak traffic hours or weather special events. It simply does not consider actual travel conditions. Like the February 11 Water Main Break along Deer Valley Drive West that Solomar resident Cory Chandler noted in their public comment, Cory points out that this resulted in the majority of departing traffic being rerouted to Deer Valley Drive East, similar to the applicant's proposed plans. And on February 11, in what one could call a test of the Fair and Pierce assumptions, gridlock ensued. WCG states clearly that applicant does not provide detail or data to support Alterra's assumptions about drop-off area function and feasibility. So we see clearly that the city's own independent third-party reviewer affirms over and over and over again how flawed and incomplete the Fair and Pierce traffic assumptions and proposed circulation plans are. And for good measure, so too does Hales Engineering, another consultant frequently used by Park City Municipal, and that we remain to offer yet another independent review of the Fair and Pierce report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hello.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Allison Kitchen, 84060. Thank you for having us here tonight and for holding this special meeting. I reside at Portico located in the Rossi Hill area, which is below the Y, and I'm the co-founder of Protect the Loop. Like WCG, Hales takes issues with Fair and Pierce's use of non-comparable scenarios and suggests locally-collected data from similar land uses would better reflect travel patterns. Hales reveals Fair and Pierce used weekday morning peak hour rates and not the typical Saturday morning peak. Hales points out flaws with trip reduction calculations, apples-to-oranges, Tahoe-to-Park City, case modeling attempts, and irrelevant trip generation data that only applies to work commute scenarios. And even the Hales review falls unacceptably short, proving that while these firms make their money collecting and modeling data, nothing replaces field observations. Hales suggests the traffic counts Fair and Pierce took at four particular locations, strangely included from their SML reports, "would provide a good measure of the number of people currently picking up and dropping off and validate the assumption of the 200 pickup and drop-off vehicles." End quote. But most of us in this room know that a good number of cars that travel to the top of the Loop along Deer Valley Drive East bypass, drop off, and head straight for the first available lot. And it's not just cars that need counting, but people. How many parents dropping off littles and gear will never be candidates for a shift to transit? And since the goal is to increase transit ridership by staggering 150%, then aren't AVO and off-site parking logistics essential parts of the equation? Field observations and real-world, not simulated, data are essential and nowhere in this more glaring and critical than the proposed drop-off area. Fair and Pierce estimates cars will pause in the drop-off area for 1 1/2 to 3 minutes. This is wholly unrealistic, given what's observed on any given day at Deer Valley. It takes people multiple minutes to offload shuttles and collect gear and people regularly stand and put on their ski boots. And parents, of the few parents casually surveyed in advance of today's meeting, we learned that many can't even unbuckle the child from a car seat and collect their belongings in 90 seconds. According to one mom and two young children that have attended Deer Valley Summer Camp and Ski School, pickup and drop-off can range anywhere from 5 to 45 minutes, with 15 minutes being the average. During this time, she and the other parents leave their cars parked in the drop-off area. Deer Valley's Hannah Tyler made claims in Friday's meeting that shuttles do not stage at Deer Valley, but again, this is incorrect. Without naming names, we confirm Deer Valley's own shuttle drivers receive lunch vouchers they redeem at Snow Park. During lunch and any bathroom breaks they take, they admit to leaving their shuttles parked in the drop-off area for 20 to 30 minutes. Given these verifiable field observations that Fair and Pierce fails to even acknowledge, let alone account for, it's almost a given that Alterra's proposed condensed dead-end drop-off area will fail. And when the drop-off area fails, so too will hotel entry and so too many garage entries. Additional entries with the traffic, additional issues with the traffic study, the applicant's plans, and the staff report include, Deer Valley Drive West and Royal Street area residents will be required to navigate parking garage and mobility hub traffic to reach the new drop-off zone. This specifically impairs their right-of-way, an impact that is precluded by Utah Code. The SML option requires more land that is available in certain areas and necessitates major structural engineering not disclosed in the current plan. The drawings shared in the staff report are inaccurate. By Alterra's own admission, the SML doesn't actually run the entire length of the Loop, but rather merges with the vehicle lane at multiple points. The staff report shows a continuous SML. With the addition of the SML lane, the 12-foot-wide multi-use path requested by Park City Municipal to wrap the entire Loop would actually only be 8 to 10 feet in the trees, as well as from the fire station to the Y. Until traffic at downstream choke points is resolved, a dedicated loop bus lane does not improve traffic flow and actually creates unnecessary conflicts with cars, cyclists, and pedestrians. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll do one more comment in the chambers and we'll move online. Come on up.
Hello, my name is Lisa Wilson and I live in 84060 and I've lived there for 30 years. I've lived on Deer Valley. I lived in Deer Valley before there was a Trails End. I lived at Lama Sonory. So I've had the opportunity to see all this fabulous development. I was also aware of the Deer Valley MPD and the rights-of-way and relied on them as a buyer. Bought a place at Lama Sonory, bought a lot in Silver Lake, bought properties in Deer Crest, and relied upon the roads that exist that allow those to get in and out. And the traffic today is the worst I've seen in 30 years. I can't get out. Between 4 and 6 o'clock, I live kind of by the Stein Ericsson residences. I basically can't leave. And God forbid, if anything ever happened, I can't even get to the doctor. You really cannot go. So let me give you an example. I had an appointment in Salt Lake. I didn't take the mine road because, you know, all those sprinter vans, they slide all over the place. And so I took Royal Street. I turned a left on Royal Street. A bus stopped and broke down between Royal Street and the Deer Valley Cafe. I go, I gotta get out of here. I gotta make my appointment. So I go up to a few cars and they say, can you just scoot a little bit left? Can you scoot a...? And so I go in between where the Deer Valley parking lot is and I go the wrong way. And by the way, during the Olympics, that was a two-way street. But you need to have multiple directions when something happens. There was another night, a friend of ours, we were coming home and Deer Valley Drive was broke or you couldn't pass because, I don't know, they were pulling horses and the whole truck fell off and, you know, it completely blocked the roads. My point is, we need to have these roads. And when you start blocking and you take away, you know, what we relied on, what we brought as property owners, I mean, what kind of precedent is this going to set? You know, if we go and we gift, and I don't know, I mean, it doesn't even sound like they're going to pay anything, but we're going to give them free land and then we're not going to be able to turn around or get out if there's an emergency or if we just want to go home or go somewhere. So my request is that we keep the roads that exist and, you know, the rest of us, we have to build within our building paths. We don't get to go, hey, can you just like make my lot a little bit bigger? Come on. Don't you want your property to get larger? I mean, this is so bold. I can't even believe it. But let's, you know, build within our building pad. That's all I'm asking and keep our roads. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to online. Do we have any hands raised?
Yes, Mayor, we have Scott Greenberg.
Council members, thank you very much for your service. Mayor Will, I appreciate it.
Hello, Scott.
Hello.
Your ZIP code, please.
84060.
Thank you.
My name is Scott Greenberg. I live in Lower Deer Valley and I am the president of the Hidden Oaks HOA. And for the record, our HOA is not in favor of the road vacation. I want to simply concentrate on one thing and that is the road vacation. As a taxpayer in the 84060 ZIP code, it occurs to me that the Doe Pass Road, along with every other road in Park City Limits, is actually the property of the taxpayers. Now, as the steward of our roads, the city should be mindful not only of the negative impact that the proposed project has on this, but the actual benefits that are being offered to the community in exchange for the road vacation. All I have heard tonight is that this project, which is, by the way, exclusively dependent upon the road vacation, will benefit the visitors to world-class resort. Well, what about providing something for the local-class visitors? What are the tangible benefits that the taxpayers, particularly taxpayers who are negatively impacted by the vacation, will receive from Alterra? What are we getting? Free lift passes for life? Free and reserved parking for the residents surrounding the community? I haven't heard anything in exchange for this road vacation. I have not heard a single reason why this is good for me, my HOA residents, or the Lower Deer Valley community at large. Please, consider and do not vacate the land because you think this will be good for us. I only see that it's good for Alterra. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another hand raised?
No hands raised, Mayor.
Okay. Come on up.
Good evening, councilors and Madam Mayor. My name is Kristin Gentili. I reside at the Line Condominiums and my ZIP code is 84060. So more issues still. There's the issue of widening Doe Pass Road. Widening Doe Pass to four lanes and anchoring a multidirectional heavy-use intersection at the west end creates significant impacts for lakeside condominiums, none of which were addressed or are addressed in the plans nor mitigated as required by Resolution 8-98. Traffic counts, they were collected in 2020 before COVID and before the Icon Pass brought considerable number of people to our... considerable number of people to our area. So a new traffic analysis should be determined. They need to determine accurate counts and review all the intersections around the loop and all of the feeder roads per UDOT's Traffic Analysis Guidelines published in 2018. The said guidelines stress the importance of field observations and the actual measuring of queue lengths. So UDOT also emphasizes the importance of observing influence areas. Altera limits the focus to the loop, and they must expand to evaluate and properly mitigate the increased impact of their development to Deer Valley adjacent neighborhoods. Also, there are a statement about transit adoption. So increased transit adoption does not equate to a decrease in cars if overall usage and capacity at Deer Valley increases. So the plan relies on assumptions regarding transit adoption. If behavior change is a mitigation strategy, Altera ties to the success of its circulation plan, it will need to prove that, prove out this behavior change over multiple seasons, and this is in, this is as mandated in the Resolution eight-nine-eight. So eight, Resolution eight-nine-eight goes on to define good cause. The city may generally find good cause when a proposal evaluated as a whole demonstrates a net tangible benefit to the immediate neighborhood and to the city as a whole. While Altera and Fair and Peers attempt to argue a few benefits for Deer Valley guests as they relate to traffic and circulation, there really isn't any tangible benefit that they can prove for their guests, Deer Valley residents, or for the city. And none of the touted benefits considers the proposal as a whole. To the contrary, these plans will significantly increase traffic, including during peak periods at major choke points located outside the site plan area, meaning Park City as a whole. The resolution also stipulates the existing density must have existing access and must not require a Platts Amendment in order to obtain a building permit. Street rights-of-way will generally not be vacated to facilitate greater area of disturbance. So the area that we're discussing, the area of the proposed public right-of-way vacation is one hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and thirty square feet. It was originally proposed that the forty thousand two hundred and fifty-seven square feet of Doe Pass Road would be dedicated to the city in exchange, which would represent a net loss of seventy-four thousand two hundred and seventy-three square feet, or that equates to one point seven-one acres, a portion of which could be developed up to forty-five feet per the existing MPD. With Doe Pass Road no longer up for dedication, the net property loss grows to two point six-four acres. Additionally, without the footprint expansion on the site, which is contingent upon the right-of-way vacation, the applications would not meet the twenty-five-foot setback or sixty percent open space requirement stipulated in the LMC. Meanwhile, one of the criteria used in determining net tangible benefit is consideration. The resolution states proposals must compensate the city for the loss of the right-of-way. Consideration favored by the city will generally be financial and/or any other public amenity deemed in the best interest of Park City citizens. Altera makes no offers of direct compensation to the city in exchange for the right-of-way vacation, nor does it detail significant investment in ongoing public amenities or true net tangible benefits for the whole of Park City. Another criteria is utility of existing right-of-way. The resolution states the city shall typically dispose of public right-of-way only when the right-of-way is no longer of significant utility to the city. The right-of-way is significant. Never will the right-of-way not be of significance. Therefore, the city council must reinforce the significance of the right-of-way area and not award this to Altera. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mark Mitchum. I live in eight-four-oh-six-oh. As a matter of fact, I just live up the street, corner of Rice Hill, Deer Valley Drive, so this is a kind of a use issue to me. You know, as to oversimplify the analogy, you know, you guys can see this. The heart expands, the arteries need a stent. Where are you gonna put the stent? Yeah, Deer Valley Drive from the Y to the roundabout is two lanes. Are there any intentions to eminent domain property to make this private enterprise more accessible, profitable, easy to get to? That's, that's one question I have, and I would like an answer on the record. Is this gonna require eminent domain, the city of Park City, to make this project happen?
The council doesn't respond during public comment, but we will certainly take that under advisement.
Thank you very much. So, you know, that, that is my question, is how do you improve? What, what's the traffic count today? What's the percentage increase in the traffic count with a new development? You know, there's also, there's the issue of pollution. Park City, as I recall, is a no-idle zone, correct? Except for buses, which the largest point source pollution in Park City. So now you're gonna have more idling up there, spewing pollution that's gonna collect in the lake bed. Not really a good thing. So that, that's my other question is, what are you guys gonna do to alleviate the artery, the issue, is it gonna require eminent domain? Because I live on Deer Valley Drive. I'm looking at the sidewalk. The sidewalk is heavily used. There's a sidewalk only on one side, on the south side. The north side only has a short section. So, so that's, that's my question, is what is the traffic flow today and what's the percentage of increase is this gonna bring to our community? And the other thing is, you know, there's, there's some ordinances that are not affected or not enforced, excuse me, perhaps such as engine braking. I see the signs, I hear them. They come down the Deer Valley Drive with more and more construction trucks. These guys don't wanna wear out their brakes. Jake brakes are free. Brake pads cost a lot of money. There is no ordinance enforcement as far as jake brakes noise for construction traffic on that section of Deer Valley Drive, which is narrow, and you hear it. So those are some of my issues with this. Eminent domain, ordinance enforcement, you know? And those are the main ones. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any hands up online?
It looks like we have someone that commented before that wants to add to their comment. Would you like to allow them?
Uh, let's wait until the very end, and if there's time, we will, but let's let other people speak.
Hi.
Good evening. Thank you for your time and commitment to our community. My name is Kim Tessitore. My zip code is eight-four-zero-six-zero. Lower Deer Valley has a major traffic problem.
Sorry.
No worries.
I didn't cut this broken, though. Sorry.
No worries.
Okay, maybe we all just sit there. Okay.
We are all acutely aware of this and seek solutions that will address the safety and convenience concerns that this causes all of us. I represent Powder Run, which is a unique property for Lower Deer Valley. It is directly adjacent to the proposed Snow Park development. We would like to comment on the proposed street vacation and development as it relates to pedestrian safety. As we have met and worked with Deer Valley through this process, we have found that they are working diligently to address both safety and convenience concerns to the best of their ability. The proposed development offers a funding mechanism to make substantial improvements to the area around our complex and the loop, including signalized crosswalks, added sidewalks, heated walkways, and direct access to the ski area without pedestrian and vehicular interaction to everyone coming to the mountain, both as a pedestrian, public transit, shuttles, or private vehicles. The shift of the loop from the current location down to Doe Pass eliminates the need for those taking public transit to cross hectic traffic in the loading and unloading zone. It also eliminates the need for those who park to navigate multiple flights of stairs in ski boots or walk up a slippery sidewalk and cross traffic. For Powder Run, the addition of a crosswalk with flashing lights to direct access to the lifts, the addition of a sidewalk on our side of the road, and the elimination of the loop traffic greatly enhances the safety of access for our owners and guests, which in its present condition is continuing to increase. We support the street vacation and development and hope that the city can continue to work with Deer Valley to optimize the funds that the Snow Park Development will offer for improving the existing low Deer Valley, lower Deer Valley traffic concerns in addition to the safety improvements that are already included in the proposal. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. Sorry. Okay. I'm not used to this.
Good evening, councilors and Madam Mayor. My name is Allison Keenan. I am a resident of Deer Lake Village and live in eight-four-zero-six-oh. I am a proud co-founder of Protect the Loop. For a better part of a year, my neighbors and I have worked together to responsibly organize, survey the community to find consensus, share good information with our neighbors, bring informed public comment to meetings, and participate respectfully in public process. Every question in our Protect the Loop survey served a purpose critical to this planning process, including understanding stakeholder connection to the project and usage so that we might have more informed and legitimate discussion about transit, ski or drop-off, summer activities, et cetera. A thousand one hundred and thirteen people responded to the survey. Ninety-six percent of respondents paid taxes in eight-four-oh-six-oh. More than fifty percent of respondents are primary residents. Fifty-two percent work here full-time. Twenty-eight percent base their employment in eight-four-oh-six-oh. Seventy-four percent never rent out their primary or secondary home here in Greater Park City. Overwhelmingly responded ski Deer Valley and also used the base area for access to hiking, biking, walking, recreating around the loop, special events and dining. Snow Park is their primary point of access. The biggest concerns of respondents in relation to the proposed Snow Park development are traffic, accessibility of the drop-off, walkability, and pedestrian and bike safety. Most respondents are in favor of the development of a base village, as granted per the current MPD. However, the majority of respondents believe the right-of-way vacation is not justified. A significant percentage of respondents don't ever and will never use transit. And again, these are overwhelmingly locals who trips are short. Community concerns are rooted in safety. These include bike and pedestrian safety, emergency evacuation, and fire mitigation. Angela mentioned Altera's narrative in her opening remarks, which includes the sweet but soft false notions that Altera is simply fulfilling the Sterns' vision for the resort, and that a right-of-way vacation, expanded ski beach and plaza are critical to achieving a world-class resort. Deer Valley's own website confirms numerous awards, accolades, and global recognition. Quote, "Deer Valley has earned United States Best Ski Resort every year since the World Ski Awards began in 2013. More than a million votes were cast across the globe from a hundred and twenty-seven countries. Deer Valley has also been ranked the number-one ski resort in the U.S. for 2020 and 2021 in Conde Nast Travelers Annual Readers' Choice Awards." Those are both quotes. Additionally, the Sterns sought Bob Wells to design a plan confined entirely to the existing parcels. They approved this in 2007, and based on everything I've learned about their incredible and enduring relationship with the Park City community, I do not believe they would have pushed for a plan that so many of their local skiers and neighbors oppose. On behalf of Protect the Loop and HOAs represented here today and in letters, we continue to support the development of a base village as is entitled per Deer Valley's Resort's 12th amended and restated large-scale MPD permit. As demonstrated here today, the proposed right-of-way vacation petition and contingent applications present a number of injuries to various property owners and the whole of Park City that Altera has not sufficiently mitigated. And per Park City's Resolution eight-nine-eight, those harms must have been mitigated in addition to prove, in addition to proving good cause and net tangible benefit in perpetuity. A wrongfully awarded right-of-way vacation would set a dangerous precedent. At this point, council must adhere strictly to process and render a no vote on the road vacation petition. Additionally, council must remand the application back to Planning Commission to have every detail of the various aspects worked out according to the Land Management Code, or Altera can choose to present a plan for Snow Park Village within the existing site, like was approved by the Sterns in 2007, and was promised not long ago by recently departed resort leadership. Only if and when all material injuries have been mitigated and both good cause and broad community net tangible benefit can be proven, may Altera appear back in public forum before council to confirm those matters of consideration. In conclusion, we believe the right-of-way vacation is not justified. We respectfully request Altera continue to participate in transparent and clean public process and work with Park City to achieve a revised project that better balances development wants with community needs. Thank you again for the privilege of this forum today.
Thank you for joining us. Do we have any hands raised online?
Just our previous commenter.
Okay, we'll hold that one a little bit. Hi, come on up.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Brad Baldridge, eight-four-zero-six-zero. I spend, we spend all the time we can here in Deer Valley. The vacation right-of-way will shift all the traffic to Doe Pass, as you, as you know. We reside at the Comstock Inn, which is exactly where the light will be placed at the end of Doe Pass. We have the only condominium on Deer, TV Drive East that has the light in front of their building with its attendant congestion, noise pollution, traffic, and air pollution. So vacating the right-of-way will shift all the, all the traffic to immediately in front of our building, causing a problem for us to exit. Currently, we can turn right, left, or go straight down Doe Pass, and this will be clearly congested and difficult to get out, which will be a bad experience for us as well as our guests. So without vacation right-of-way, we'd not have this problem, so thank you for that consideration.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thanks. I'm Charlotte O'Connell, eight-four-zero-six-zero. We live on, in Lakeside, but we back up to Deer Valley West, and I just wanted to give data points. We watch the traffic every day, and I thank my husband for having the foresight to buy this place because we watch it for an hour and a half going in there and out of there. I just sent a picture to Planning of traffic, the, the parking at Deer Valley. When I left at about two o'clock one afternoon, it was lined on both sides with ten cars and solid down the middle of cars moving through. So I counted, that was thirty cars. That's just in the car spots. Next door, in the next lane was the shared drop-offs, and that was another ten spots with shared drop-offs, so that's forty. Well, let's say twenty, twenty, and ten, so thirty. And then there were six spots for the buses, so thirty-six spots. That doesn't count, count the four that are down below that aren't very often used. We walked through there, and they're not that often used, but that's, that's thirty-four spots, and what Deer Valley has proposed is essentially ten car drop-offs at that circle, even though if you, you look at where they're in the circle, it's about ten. And then they're saying six buses. So we're watching that traffic. Hour and a half in the morning, hour and a half in the afternoon. That's, that's just one of the data points. We, so we don't think the vacation makes any sense for all the legal reasons that people have already said. Over the summer, I took noise level tests, and buses and trucks are over eighty-four decibels, seventy is loud. If we were listening to buses and trucks on that side of the road, I know it's not the majority of people in this town, but eighty-four decibels from trucks and buses as this construction goes on is really not okay, and there has to be something done about that. And one of the things that nobody's talked about, and this doesn't have anything to do with the vacation, but when Deer Valley builds this underground garage, that's a lot of concrete that's going to have to divert water that's actually coming off of the mountain. And it comes through my basement because when Lakeside was built, everybody says, well, you're on the lakes. Now, we're twenty feet above the lake, and the water coming through my basement is off of the mountain. So I wanna know, as this goes further along, I'm not saying Deer Valley can't do their thing, but I wanna know what they're gonna do about the water that comes under the mountain that the miners had the foresight to build exit for the water through the mines. So those are my comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Melissa Davidson again.
Before you, before you speak, is there anyone else here who has not yet spoken tonight?
This is on behalf of William Shepherd.
Okay.
He, he had called and asked if I could read his, his comments into, into the record. Mr. Shepherd, he's a thirty-four-year board member for Lakeside, and in 2019, he organized the Lower Deer Valley Coalition, which is made up of HOAs in the Lower Deer Valley to have a common voice and direction to work with Deer Valley. Uh, and he says, we want to address the issue where Deer Valley or Altera states there are no alternatives for them to develop the Snow Park area without Park City vacating part of Deer Valley Drive. In two thousand seven and two thousand eight, Deer Valley's Bob Wells planned a complete development of the Snow Park area, and I believe a copy of that's already been provided to the council members and the mayor uh, within the MPD granted to Deer Valley. All of the development was planned and confined to the boundaries of Deer Valley. The two seven, two thousand seven, two thousand eight plan kept the present loop in place, which today is supported and wanted by all thirty one HOAs in the coalition. Many homeowners decide, that decided to settle in Deer Valley and Park City due to the fact being able to drop off their families right at Snow Park at the snow. Many have voiced their negative opinions of walking a thousand feet from the mobility center to the carpenter lift and back with kids in tow or being carried. In twenty nineteen, Deer Valley was provided with an alternative plan where the beach and the plaza could be constructed within the loop, the loop going lower to the ground level where the present parking lot tram loads and unloads. A mobility hub was included with that area, and this answers the Park City's request for the mobility hub. Yet Deer Valley states there's no options. The coalition has tried to work with Deer Valley with little response other than it's their way or the highway. Deer Valley has previously planned a world-class development within their boundaries. Why can't they do the same today? The coalition asks Park City not to grant the variance from the MPD and to have Deer Valley confine the Snow Park project within Deer Valley's boundaries. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments in the chambers? Okay, I'll go back online.
We have Jeanne and Joe Graupman.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Jeanne Graupman. I'm at eight four zero six zero. First of all, thank you to the council and to the mayor for holding this public meeting. My husband Joe and I have been owners at Comstock Lodge located at twenty six fifty Deer Valley Drive East, Park City since two thousand ten. Comstock Lodge is right across the street from Doe Pass Road on Deer Valley Drive East. During this time, we have enjoyed the tremendous activities provided by Deer Valley in the winter, summer and fall. We have also been looking forward to the day when Deer Valley Resort's Snow Park Base Area will be developed to fulfill the last major piece of its visionary plan. Over the past year, we have read many documents that have been provided and updated by Altera and Deer Valley, including analysis by consultants, reports, charts, tables, and other materials about the entire project. Additionally, I have had several in-person meetings, Zoom sessions and Teams presentations with several members of the Altera management team. I had several meetings with Jake Romney, Director of Development, to discuss my concerns about the project. Mr. Romney addressed all the questions I had and suggested alternatives to address critical issues. In particular, he reviewed several maps, charts and tables that showed the roads, traffic flow, traffic volumes, vehicle level of service, options for bike transit or flex lane, and many other aspects about the plan. He spent considerable time presenting traffic simulation software, which showed various scenarios of the traffic flowing into and out of Deer Valley at all different times of the day and the week, including peak and non-peak times during ski season. In December twenty twenty two, I attended the informational open house at Snow Park Lodge, where I was able to meet and discuss the project with several members of the Deer Valley Snow Park Project Team. They answered all my questions and addressed concerns I expressed to them. The open house was an excellent public event to present their plan and address concerns with the public. The resort's decision not to seek additional density or height variances speaks volumes about its commitment to the local community. In addition, the resort has addressed traffic and parking with a well-thought-out and integrated traffic management plan. Since residents and guests of our building access Deer Valley from Deer Valley Drive East, we have been highly interested in potential traffic flow changes, safety aspects, and any impacts to our guests in the building. The resort team members responded by having multiple meetings and a high level of engagement with us. Deer Valley Resort has been and continues to be an open and responsive partner. They have worked closely to consider the community and the requirements placed on them by the city to be transit-focused and environmentally conscious. Deer Valley Resort President and COO Todd Bennett also has sustainability as a top priority. This is rare these days with development projects and is very much appreciated. My husband Joe and I fully support Deer Valley's plan and urge the city to allow Deer Valley to move forward. We believe the proposal is a positive one for the community, for guests who wish to visit a world-class ski resort and for visitors to a resort that provides amenities that currently do not exist. Thank you for this opportunity to express our support for Deer Valley's Snow Park Project.
Thank you for joining us online. Do we have any more hands raised?
Yes, we have Amrit. If you could please state your full name and your zip code for the record.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can now, yes.
Hi, Amrit Nagpal, eight four zero six zero. Uh, my family's been a homeowner in Solomir since nineteen eighty seven. Uh, we've enjoyed Deer Valley and had many of our most cherished memories uh, at and around the resort and in Park City. I'm extremely concerned about the proposal, in particular, the rerouting of traffic and the impact on access to Solomir on Queen Esther and, and Solomir. Uh, I strongly disagree with the most recent speaker who believes that Altera has worked closely to factor in the needs of the community. In fact, I think that Altera has acted in an invasive and deceptive manner and shown only limited elements of their true intentions. I disagree with providing the, the row and believe that Altera has not provided any alternative proposals, uh, because they haven't been forced to, and I believe the council should uh, move to not allow the row to see what alternative proposals that Altera could provide. Thank you.
Thank you. We're coming towards the end of our time. Do we have any more hands up online?
Just our previous commenter.
Okay, let's go ahead and we'll finish with that.
Uh, we have someone signed in with an email address ending in Berkeley.edu. If you could please state your full name and zip code for the record.
Hello? Are you with us? Are they muted?
She's unmuted, but I'm not sure if she intended to give comment. Maybe, maybe not.
Okay. Well, with that, we will close this public input session. I thank you all for your attendance tonight, both in person and online. You know, the comments that we've heard have been well thought out. We, we so appreciate that, and they've been um, insightful and the data, and many have been data-driven, and, and we do appreciate that. So, uh, we will close this public hearing. There has not yet been a date certain set for when this will come back in front of the council. As soon as that date is set, it will be well publicized. So again, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for attending.
Mayor, could you have a motion though to continue just to a date uncertain? Motion to continue to a date uncertain because you're not closing.
All right, that was not on the agenda.
Your honor, I move that we continue to a date uncertain.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we're adjourned.